All right. We might as well get started so we can get out and enjoy this beautiful weather. For everyone, Sarah sent me an email. She is picking up her son from college, so she wishes she could be here, but she has that responsibility, so we will carry on, and I'll turn it over to Denise.
Great. Good evening. Just a quick remark, there is an updated strategic plan, and I know Sarah had asked for this, and we'll make sure that we get one in her folder to her, but just to remind the board that the strategic plan on this side is the part that we're approving or looking at for next week. All the other information is extra, and some of it still needs to be defined because we won't have data for our goals until next week, so just FYI in that. So this evening, we are digging into levy basics. We've had some conversations about school finance and how it works, and several sessions now on a broader base about how school finance works in the state of Minnesota and how it's impacted by federal and state decisions. We've looked at what it means for Stillwater, and this evening, we're really digging into more information about our levies. Then the next work session, we're going to have a conversation about employee contracts and negotiations and class sizes. Those are two of the things that the board has control over that can also impact our finances. And then we're asking on June 7th that we have a discussion about how we have a strategy moving forward to stay financially healthy. So with that, just as a review, the work session purpose, we're going to gain an understanding of how taxpayers support our schools. We're going to review the levy process with you, and then consider ways the school board might increase revenue to support learning within the district. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the presentations and the work that you've already engaged in, and I have to say that this board has done more work around school finance and really understanding in depth than any I probably know, so done a great job with that. So I'll turn it over to Kristen Holheisel, and we'll dig in.
Thank you. I would like to say, you know, one of the things I was told when I started in this profession was that there was about a five-year learning curve to my job, and that is a very accurate statement. And so, when looking to put together these presentations, it's trying to present information with a basic understanding of what the material is, but recognizing that, you know, it took me five years to get to a complete understanding and not to go too deep, because sometimes you can really get lost in the details that are so fine-tuned. So we're going to keep this a little bit higher level, again, just with a basic concept, please feel free to ask questions if you have them, but just so you know, that was the approach in creating all of these presentations. We have discussed in all of our prior meetings about revenue collection and the methods, and I'd like to focus tonight specifically on the local levy component or the property taxes. And you've seen the graph before, and the local levy component is 26%. There are categories that are voter-approved and non-voter-approved, and you can see some of the areas that are identified under which they fall. When you move into, or our taxpayers, as they move into receiving their tax statement as to how do they understand what happens, you receive your proposed taxes, and on that, there's a list of different numbers. One is your market value. You can see what your house is being assessed at, and then as you work your way through, you see the different entities that are taxing you, and one of them is Stillwater Area Public Schools, and it divides out what area is voter-approved and what area is non-voter-approved. And so back to the original categories, when a person receives this in the mail, they can say, okay, here is what I owe, what is my responsibility as a homeowner, anybody owning property within the district to pay, and what categories in which I'm paying. Now, this slide is, I attach this slide to the Truth in Taxation Hearing Meeting every December, because things can change, and this slide was adjusted slightly from what you typically see in December, because once December happens, that we can always have like a voter-approved referendum that happens after the fact that wasn't reflected in the numbers, but holistically, when we're just talking levies, what are the things that, what are the variables that essentially we don't even necessarily control, whether it's coming from the state, the assessor, whatever that looks like legislatively, that adjusts us from year to year, even before it gets to the board table in any decision process? And those things would be the changes in your market value, the changes in class rates or history, did you go from residence or homestead to a non-homestead? Did you go from a residential property to a seasonal recreational? Those things change. Market value credits are part of a formula base that gets issued legislatively and how that gets applied to each individual home, and then state adjustments. Those things happen without any of our control. That can vary, that is out of our purview, if you will. The authority for school levies, and again, this is a slide that you see annually, is that a school district tax levy may either be set by state formula or voter-approved. The one change in what you haven't seen in the past is the italicized red below set by state formula that says it's either required by statute or it's district option. Now, you've heard me speak and say there are many categories that go into the whole, the entire levy run. Some of those you can under-levy, and you can do so without penalty. Others you will receive a penalty for. You could lose aid, state aid in another category. Those typically tend to go more towards the, they're required by statute. The state is saying, we're going to say you need to do this, and if you don't, you're going to be penalized for it. The district option ones are things such as, for us, long-term facility maintenance, where you choose the amount that you believe you need and that your, the impact that it could have on your taxpayers. You make decisions such as that.
Can you give a for example under required by statute?
Yes. So, and it actually phased out this last year. There was what was called a general ed levy, and what the state did was there was $20 million statewide that essentially the state said, we're going to give aid, but we're going to levy, make each school district levy for this amount and submit it to the pot so we can kick it out in aid. That would be one of them. So it was $20 million, I believe, that was divided statewide, that every school district needed to levy a proportionate share for, give it to, you know, then the state used that in their calculation, it essentially offset aid is what it did, but they forced you to do it. It was an aid offset.
A question, follow-up question on that one. The schools that were forced to do it are the only ones who went out for a levy, or they, all the districts?
It was all of the districts. Like I say, it was more of the state's way of saying, we're going to replace our aid with your levy, and we're going to require you to do this.
But you've got to come up with the money.
But, well, you're going to put it upon your taxpayers, you're going to do this, we're going to tell you it's this much, and if you choose not to, you're going to lose that aid. That would be one. Again, that one just phased out this last year, but that's a for example, and we have to be cautious, because there are some formulas in there that also have an aid component, where if you do less than, you're going to lose aid too. Change in market value, and this is just going to give you kind of a concept of what can happen in its most simplified way, as far as what would happen if, you know, market value changed with your neighbor or down the road and nothing changed to you. So, let's just say that the school districts, the school district was looking to collect $1,000 total in levy, and we have five homes to divide that by, and those five homes are each, their market value is $200,000. Conceptually, each of those homes will pay the school district $200. They're all valued the same, we're collecting, we've set our dollar amount, that's what they're collecting. But now your neighbor goes and adds on to their basement and creates a deck and, you know, maybe a second-floor sunroom, or who knows? They get assessed differently. Now, their home value is $400,000, and every other one of your neighbors stays at $200,000. You can see back to, you hear me say it's a proportionate share, that now the $400,000 home is taking $400, where their tab used to be 200, and what that does is because we're going off of the dollar amount collected, it drops everybody else by $50. Does that make sense?
But all other factors staying the same, if everybody went up, probably they'd pay about the same as in the first.
Correct. It's the differential between the two, or if someone goes up and you go down, then it's even, I mean, it's taking it from the pool. And so that's why, you know, it's, when giving the presentation, it's, even with Truth in Taxation, it is assuming that, you know, that everything stayed at static, if you will, because those variations between, you know, and people will call and say, my taxes went up, you said they wouldn't, yes, what happened to your market value, because that's usually the indication that, again, and that's not something that we control. But just a very, hopefully, simple example of how that works with market value. And then tax base change. So as Stillwater, the Stillwater community grows, and we look at, you know, the increase in residential homes or commercial industrial property, anything that happens like that, it also can change what someone was paying from one year to the next. So, back to, we had the conversation of, wait a minute, we levied $30 million a year ago, now we're levying $33 million. We said we'd keep the levy, the levy flat. Well, we said we'd keep the impact flat, not the dollar amount, because the greater the tax base, and you'll see this in areas in school districts that have strong commercial property, their taxpayers reap the reward of that a little bit because they can, or there's a large concentration. So, if we started in Stillwater schools a year ago, and we had five homes, and they were each paying their $200, and the very next year, we now have eight homes, and we're asking for the same dollar amount, you can see the change from what their portion of the school taxes would be. So the more our tax base grows, you know, the more opportunity we have to consider what financial changes we can make to either hold taxes constant, or, you know, there's strategy or thought process behind what you want that to look like. Does that make sense?
When do you find out what the tax base would be?
I want to say, we see the preliminary numbers, and I honestly, Tom, don't know when they get adjusted. I see them in the first run from the state in September. I don't know when the final is out. In all honesty, I'm not paying a ton of attention to that. That would be our, the financial advisor that's watching when you see the impact graphs that are using that number.
Yeah. This question is probably premature, but I was, I wrote it down, so I wouldn't forget it, so if you want to deal with it later, maybe you have a slide.
Sure.
And that is annually, what's been kind of our experience in terms of market value? In other words, the total tax base, does it go up 1%, 2%, 5%? And you might want to look at it at five years or 10 years, because it impacts significantly the individual home that stays the same in their value.
So tax base growth and market value history and...
Just like maybe over the last five years, what's it been in?
Okay. Do they have a projection? Did I hear that too?
Could be, yeah.
And if I had my levy information with me, I'd be able to look and see, you know, what it was and what the history was, I just don't have that.
And even if we don't get it tonight, I think that'd be a good factor, you know, because, for example, if you went up 5%, that would really be significant if you were projecting up 5%, because that may have a neutralizing effect.
Right.
In terms of an increase.
And that's why usually in September, I try to present the slide that says, you know, everything remaining constant, kind of with the new numbers that come in, our taxes are actually going to go down. You know, you see that nuance, usually is I'm able to provide that slide in September. The question came up at the last learning session on finance about, you know, what has happened to the expectation of local taxpayers versus how much the state is kicking in? And this graph is specific to Stillwater schools, but I will say, in review of all material, it's very, it's relatively consistent with what the average is in the state of Minnesota. So what this graph shows you is in fiscal year 2003, so that would be the school year 2002-2003, essentially, there was, and we're using that as the baseline, because there was essentially no property tax that was being used to support school districts. So that would be your baseline. And then from 2003 to fiscal year 2012, in that period, as our state struggled to balance its budget, the pieces that it contributed in aid for schools decreased. So, right here, the per pupil amount was approximately $10,900 per student. By the time we bottomed out, we were about $2,000 less than that. What needed then to happen was the local taxpayers had to pick up the burden, as you can see the green is levy, had to start picking up the burden of what wasn't being provided to us in state aid. As we move, and so if you, if you look at the line of 2003 to 2012, and that was an area of a hard loss, where in total, like I say, we were probably looking about 2,000 less per kid than when we started, so you went from $10,900 to just shy, like $9,000 per student. Then the economy started to recover, the state's budget started to recover, different things started to happen, and money started then to get, and the blue line is revenue, is total revenue. Then money started to get, being added on to the formula, and that's, you know, what we hear about every year, is, you know, you've seen 2%, you've seen 4%, you've seen different numbers going into state aid. The challenges, and in the explanation, and the challenges, you can see that, but how long until at least, you know, the aid piece of it hasn't recovered to where it once was? I mean, it's still about $1,000 shy of where we were, so we, if we were at $10,900 in aid, we're now at $9,900 in aid. The revenue that we collect per student over the course of 16 years is up less than 2% in 16 years.
When you combine the green and the red?
When you combine the green and the red. And then you can see, again, the expectation is the locals have been, you know, pushing to keep the total revenue at where it's at, where the 2003 baseline is. But I just wanted to provide this graph, because the question did come up of what, how has that changed through the course of time, and the recognition of, you know, call it state's responsibility or not, but at least where, you know, where they once were to where they are now has changed. And so when you hear the language of, you're still not caught up, this is what people are talking about.
Is the 2019 there an anticipated number, or is that, we know that number?
We know that number. That was done the last legislative session for the biennium, so that we were given 2%.
Right, right, right.
Now, would it change, could it change if the governor's proposal went through of a, you know, and granted, it's one-time, but the governor has on the table an additional one-time 2% bump to schools this coming year to help out with budget reductions? If that goes through, that could change, but that's, that is, that is a hard number today. All of these are, because we've already levied for this year as well.
And what it leaves out, and I realize it's a much smaller percent, is whatever the federal government does is left out.
That's correct. Also, in previous conversations, was what, how do we compare? What goes on? What does this look like as far as whether metro schools and then in the gray? I will say the gray is identified as our comparison schools that we've used when you have seen, and you'll see it in future graphs in this presentation, comparison schools we've used about the $250,000 home if you lifted us up and moved us over, so the gray represents those districts. Where do we fall, or, you know, who's at the cap? I will say this, and I was actually pleased that I answered this correctly during the last meeting, in that St. Louis Park and Hopkins, and they have the asterisks, are the only two schools left that are grandfathered. When the formula changed and went from, you know, essentially all students, resident or not, to students that you currently serve, when that formula changed, this changed in how, you know, school districts contribute. So in the metro area, they're collecting just shy of 2050 and 2044 respectively, and their voters, you can see what their voters have approved. And then they also have, and I just added this column because Director Patachek had asked for it, you know, what do they have for capital projects levy, a tech levy or some other, some other component that they're looking at? And so those are the only two schools that are grandfathered.
It used to be about a dozen.
It was. It was. And then the formula change altered that. Now, these schools that are listed at the 1967-32, that's the most, that's the cap. That's the most, unless you're grandfathered, that's the most any school district can get. What's listed in this column is their voters have actually given them approval for more than that. They can't collect it, but should the cap change, they don't have to go back to their voters to get more. So, Wizetta has said, we'll give you the authority to collect up to $2,000 per student, but right now, they're only able to collect the 1967-32. If the state changed, or inflation on the cap adjusts enough, they're still covered.
Yeah, they don't have to go back.
They don't have to go back.
I feel like Minnetoka was grandfathered.
Again, there were, and actually, my former school district was as well, but what has happened was a formula change occurred a few years ago that adjusted and made that different. Because this cap used to be, I mean, we, it used to be like $1,500, and then they did a formula change, which then made it, you know, in the 1900s, and so that adjusted what the grandfathered.
So for comparison purposes, when we went out and got our last levy approved, would have been when there were about a dozen or 13.
Mm-hmm. And I want to say at that, again, I think it was the low 1500s, and we had asked for 14-something, and we're $6 short of it at the time. But again, you can see where Stillwater is, no capital projects on our books, and where the rest of, what you'll see as far as what the taxpayers pay as we move into the slides.
Now, Roseville passed something. Is that included in there?
It is.
Really?
Mm-hmm. You know, and what's interesting to me, and again, there's many components, is, okay, so this is, this is what they're paying per student, but then, again, if you go in what is a $250,000 home in Roseville, they're actually out-of-pocket more expense. The school's collecting that, but the homeowner's out-of-pocket expense to the school is actually higher than in Stillwater, even though our voter approval is higher.
So, for example, if you were going to look at St. Louis Park there, theirs is like 2,049 roughly, plus what's under capital, so.
This slide you've seen, but I'd just like to point out, we're talking about levies tonight, and this is when you certify the proposed, so that's September, and I'm entering the information, as we've discussed, you know, we're talking about it in June, maybe some decisions, July, I'm entering it to get ready for your first action, official action on the levy process in September. Just wanted to show you as far as, you know, how we start the levy process six months before the calendar year that the taxes are already collected in. Again, we start it in July, taxes are collected, you know, we start moving into June, and then one, and then the fiscal years, and how I have to reconcile accounting-wise the fiscal years. So, you would certify a levy in 2017 for pay 18, which means that's when our taxpayers are paying, and it is in calendar year 18, but we're collecting it for the 18-19 school year, so it's kind of a three-year cycle. And you can see you adopted the levy in December. Our taxpayers will pay in May and October of this year, and it's for revenues that I count for the next school year, and again, there's a reconciliation process with my side of the house, too, between two different fiscal years. The opportunities for additional revenue, we talked about this, what is on the, an opportunity immediately is the non-voter-approved, other post-employment benefit levy of up to $1 million per year, and then the Q-comp levy, which is 90, we have the opportunity to levy $91 per student, we do collect aid of $169 per student right now to support that program, which is $745,000. Now, I will say, you will see a slide that shows 750,000 as we show tax impact, just realize I can't, I'm not, it's not good use to be going in $5,000 increments, so there is a $5,000 variable, your collection would be 745, but just to give you an idea of what the tax impact would be. And then, you can choose, as we look to the future, to increase the operating referendum, or do technology slash capital projects levy, or both. Those are both conversations to help with additional revenue.
So talk about, what are other examples of capital projects?
Curriculum.
It was basic level, it's anything that's not salary.
Pretty much.
Except for when it's involved in tech.
So what do you put under curriculum, or these are the examples?
Well, yeah. Old school, it could be like textbooks, things like that. Again, your curriculum might actually be technology.
Could be software now.
Yeah.
I can give some examples, so like, for example, we put the Lego robotics in the sixth grade, all of that is, it's physical plant item.
Stuff.
Yep, stuff.
It can't be like hens, right?
No, it can't be...
No, structural supply.
And technically, the definition of capital is its shelf, its useful life is greater than one year.
Okay, so, things like whiteboards and, which one do they go in? Do they go in tech, or do they go in...
Probably both. It could work either way.
Well, that seems like it could be a little confusing, because, you know, we talk about buildings for bonds, and you think capital, one might think, okay, capital meaning, you know, structures or whatnot.
The other thing that people don't often think of is, for example, our music program. We have very expensive instruments that have a lifespan of that, tubas, basses.
And that, in my mind, that's curriculum.
Those are capital curriculum purchases that belong to the district.
More hardly what does the state account?
Well, the state accountant would say, again, that you use that to instruct the child. It's curriculum.
But I mean, it's ultimately, there are people calling shots.
It is, yes.
Some people would remind, test tubes, textbooks, tubas.
What? Say that again?
Test tubes.
Test tubes, textbooks, tubas, kind of gives you the scope of...
That must be on the admin training side of the house.
Yeah.
I don't got that.
That's a lot of them.
You don't like to play with alliteration.
George. This graph represents the 10-year snapshot of where we are. One thing I would like to point out, so you can see, we're moving along quite nicely as far as where we are, the purple represents the referendum, the operating referendum revenue, and you can see when that drops off. The local optional revenue is the $424 that was implemented by the state. What I'd like to call your attention to is because this is, this is a piece, the green, the lime green is going to be something that I'm going to ask the board to make a decision on this summer. It's for, and I'm going to read, I apologize, I'm going to read this. "For districts that created up to $300 of board-approved referendum allowance, beginning with the 2014-2050, paid 2050 levy limitation and certification, and lasted five years." So when we passed our operating referendum in 2013, legislatively, there was a legislative change where it came down and they said, you can take up to $300 of your board-approved authority, essentially moving categories, you move it from voter-approved to non-voter-approved. If you pass, you can do it up to five years, if you pass, if your board agrees and you pass a resolution, and that's the category in which it's housed. At that time, our school board did that. Our five years is up this summer. So what that means is, if we're just looking to renew for another five years, it doesn't increase your taxes, it keeps us doing exactly what we're doing. increase your taxes, it keeps us doing exactly what we're doing, but it is a motion that you would have to take. If you chose not to go that way, that money would go back into the voter-approved category, of which it subjects itself to a vote, I mean, you run the risk of losing it if the voters didn't approve it in future years. So I'll take you back. I, I believe if I recall, the conversation was, okay, our voters said we could levy up to this dollar amount, and at that time, that board said, "We've got the approval, they've given us the approval, now let's take that approval and move $300 over in category, let's move it to the non-voter-approved." It didn't do anything, because they, the opinion was, they've already given the approval. We're now at a point where you have to decide if you want to continue on that path for another five years. That's what will happen this summer.
There, there was something with it that we didn't do, wasn't there a $475?
There was.
What was it? My memory's faulty there, but we had two cho, we had a couple of choices. 300 or 475, and we did the 300, and we didn't do the 400, and I forget, you guys remem, Mike, you remember that?
Yeah. I don't remember why, but it was something to do with.
We took the.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, we took the lesser of the two.
Well, and, and there was, and I want to say, I think it was, tell me if this, if you recall, I think it came down to, there was one that it was actually, this was saying our voters approved and we're switching categories, the other one was actually an add, and maybe I'm wrong.
Additional?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, it, what I find interesting on this is, obviously, most people know, there's the, what's a bill out there, I'm not sure, it's not alive anymore, is that once you pass, the next time you had to go to renewal, you could just go to your board. In a way, this is a form of that, it's awfully close.
Yes, but it limits you to the $300.
To that amount.
I will say, statewide, I, I, and I've seen the results, I think we would be hard-pressed to find maybe more than a dozen or two dozen districts that aren't doing it.
Aren't.
That are doing this.
Are not doing the.
The yellow part.
The, the, yeah, this part, where they took their authority, and it was also crea, so it was created in part because there were districts that were on, it was an equity piece, too, there were districts that were unable to pass, get a voter-approved refer.
Yours branch.
Yeah, unable, well, or Brook, I, I think more like Brooklyn Center, they had nothing. And with that, maybe, and with that, you know, you, you clearly now have disparity, depending on where you reside, and so it gave those boards an opportunity to, for the board to do that, and that's why for us it was a replacement, and for them it was an addition.
Yeah. See, part of the context for this, too, is realize that when we passed this, we had 13 schools, districts, that could go much higher than we did. So I suspect that was probably some of the rationale that went behind this yellow area, because what you say, and of course, the C organization is built on that, the inequity between districts, and their ability to, to raise money.
So just know, and, and we, and I, I mean, I can have that resolution drafted and start reviewing, but this is going to be something that you're going to have to make a decision on this summer, as far as, do you want to just to continue or renew it? Again, it doesn't give us additional authority, it doesn't change anything from what we're currently doing, it just moves it another five years.
So, just a little peek in the future, so if we renewed that, that would be for when?
That would be for, well, we're, we would be doing it for the nineteen.
In 2018?
We would be doing it in 2018, which means it affects your taxpayer, well, it doesn't, it's, it looks the same to the taxpayers, but it would still classify that for then, it's the next five years. So if you look, it's the nineteen, these three, and then these two, so it would bring us up to 24.
So Kristen, an easy number, if I've got it? At $300 a student, times a rough number of 8,000 students, it's the equivalent of approximately 2.5 million a year.
Yes.
Is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
And if it goes away, it's an automatic shortfall to the budget of 2.4 million a year.
No, what it does is, if it, it, no, because it won't automatically go away, it will just change categories?
It'll only go away if you are.
It goes away if your voters vote no.
That's my point, if you, if you put it back out to vote and it gets voted down.
That's your risk.
Your risk is a 2.5 million dollar annual risk.
Correct.
So really, if the continuation begins 2020 through 2024, that's a five-year clock, yeah, okay.
The comparison, and again, these were the gray highlighted districts before, you've seen this with.
Go back one second.
Yeah.
And the very last ones on there, the blue represents the local optional revenue?
The $424 that is available statewide. You've seen this slide, $250,000 homestead, again, if we pick, this is what, where our number is for $250,000 residential property, and, and all of our neighbors, if you will, and where they fall, if you lifted up your house and moved them there. Should you choose to move forward with both OPEB at the full amount, and this is where I say you see the 750,000 as opposed to the 745, the impact, that would be OPEB, that would be Q Comp, that would be the levy impact on a home, and you can see where that puts us, again, as we look at our 2,000, 250,000 homestead residential property.
Okay, so, me not being a finance person, how do you compare this, this slide to this slide where we are, where, what is the difference between this one with the gray, like, it just, it's easy, so just give it to me.
So, the, the answer is, this slide tells you what your taxpayer is paying, the other slide tells you what the district is collecting in revenue per kid.
Okay.
You can't.
So this has nothing to do with per kid, this is part of total?
That is what that homeowner is paying in school district taxes. However, and back to, just because our, maybe our voter approval is higher, I mean, I think that's what that shows, our voter approval on this slide is higher than Roseville, North St. Paul, Mata Medei, we're higher than them as far as our voter approval goes, but our taxpayers aren't seeing the same effect. So they're tied, but they're, you can't.
Can you say that again, one more time?
Our voter approval for the operating referendum is higher. Now, there's other levies, please rec, I mean, that's the thing, this is all of the levies, that, so I don't want to, you know, say that, but I'm just saying, our voter approval for the operating referendum is higher, but their, their taxpayer on a $250,000 property is paying more, could be other levies, you know, they could have more debt, they could, you know, we've been pretty judicious, honestly, with our debt piece, if these prop, if, you know, South Wash is building like crazy, I mean, if other things are going on.
See, that would be my question, and, and that's what's reflected there, is South Wash has been constructing much more for a much longer time.
Correct, and so their debt is absorbing a piece of that, it might not be the general fund, and so they're not necessarily comparable, it's just what lens do you want to look at it from?
Right, that's true.
And then again, like I say, the, the impact if you went full, this slide.
So we really don't move on that, on that one, if you add your 43, we're in the same place we are right now.
Well, and I, I mean, this slide, and I think, you know, back to what was, what is the operating referendum or capital projects versus in its totality, what your taxpayers, I mean, there's decisions, right? Are we putting it, are we going out for buildings, are we doing it that way, are we going to do it on the other side of the house and do it operating refer, I mean, everybody has, I'm guessing every school in the state of Minnesota recognizes what their taxpayers are willing to absorb, or maybe can absorb, or both.
And actually, the, if you remember, one of the slides we had in our previous presentation, we had last year's numbers underneath there also, we pulled them out because it gets to be kind of a lot on the slide, but if you look at Stillwater, last year, this year we're 928.75, we were, last year, we were about $40 more, we were about nine, yeah, yeah, 971 or something like that. So, last year, because of our growth and that kind of thing, it's gone down $40 this year already, just by, by doing nothing, really. So if you make the decision to go forward, it'll be back to where it was this year.
Cash. This slide you have seen before, it has been updated, we use this, I used this slide a few meetings last year when we were talking about the OPEB levy tax impact, and maybe, you know, it should have been OPEB and Q Comp, they both fall into the same category of what classes are taxed and how they're taxed, so whatever increment, at least with OPEB that you choose, whether it's the full million, or it's, you know, 500,000, you can see the estimated market value and the annual impact to that property. So if you just, you know, again, if you're looking at Q Comp and saying that's, you know, $750,000, and, and you have that dollar amount there, and then OPEB, we want to fall somewhere in here, that's, that's your reference. Again, back to the most, you're in the $43 range for, it would be, you know, taking the 1901, or excuse me, the 2473 plus, and here, you know, to give you your $40.
So that's, if I understand it, that's really just the OPEB tax impact?
Well, it's actually, but whatever you do with, with Q Comp, George, if, if you said we wanted 750,000, it's going to go between these two, that's going to be the addition. So, whatever you choose with OPEB, let's say you chose 500,000 for OPEB, and that's $12.37 on a $250,000 home.
Right.
And you want to do Q Comp, which is going to be another $21, you add the two, that's going to be your impact.
That's where you got your roughly 43.
Exactly.
The one thing that I do want to make sure that we clear on with the Q Comp piece, is that, the caveat to the Q Comp is that none of that additional monies would be agreed upon going towards teacher additional pay as part of Q, it would have to go into paying for things like instructional coaches that then offsets.
And that was my question, is, I, I can understand the OPEB, the Q Comp, I'm, I think that's the caveat that I would need to make sure that people understood, because as I understand it, Q Comp, we basically, it's a wash from what we get to what we spend, I mean, we spend more, even though it was supposed to be kind of, we're bringing this money in, we're going to try to, but, so we could still use these additional funds for other things, but it wouldn't go into the teacher's salary part.
Correct.
Yeah.
For example, right now, we have a, we, well, you, right, so Q Comp is an agreement between you and the teachers, the school board and the teachers, and so, right now, we have about 500, 550,000 that, take it out of the general bucket, that we're paying for instructional coaches towards that. So, as an example, if you levied for that, you could, in that agreement, say, we're going to, we're going to take that Q Comp dollars, and that's what we're going to pay instructional coaching out of in this example, that then frees up that general fund. It's a, it's a shifting of buckets inside of Kristen's slide of everything that's on the left-hand side, it can move between that, but I just want to make sure you understood with Q Comp that it would have to be part of an agreement between you as the board and the, and the teachers' group with regard to that, because otherwise you don't see it in your revenue.
Here's the old word of, you'll know, supplant, is that?
It's what it's doing.
Yeah.
But is it a chicken and the egg type of argument, do you need the agreement first before, or do we, before we say, "Yes, we're going to do this," or, "But we're only going to do it for the, taking it out, not putting it towards salaries," or do you do that on, are you betting that that's the agreement of, that ultimately will be?
Well, the Q Comp agreement is an annual agreement, which you can discontinue at any time, so I would argue, yeah, you probably would have to do some stuff on the front end, but if in the end, if it played out that, that way, which you hope it doesn't, as a school board, you could say, "Nope, the idea was, we were going to levy for this, to do this with it, and if that's not agreeable, then we're not levying for it anymore."
But see, where the word supplant comes in, and it's important, if I'm defining it right, you cannot use, like, they use it a lot of times with grants, and you can't use that to supplant or do what you're already doing, but apparently this you can.
This we can, because it's our program.
And because we're supporting the Q Comp program already out of different general funds.
You just got to avoid it, it's kind of a bookkeepers.
Yes.
How many coaches do we have?
Eight.
And we're paying five of them out of the current Q Comp budget?
We're paying four and four right now, I believe, four and four, five or three.
We're paying four, four out of the general and four out of Q Comp.
Yep.
So when Tom had asked, you know, kind of a wash.
I think we may shift to five next year is what it was, I can't remember.
And it, I was picking up on your non-verbals, and you kind of maybe intimated a little bit, how I read it was that we're actually spending maybe more than what we're getting.
We, we supplant the Q Comp program with general fund dollars at this point.
More than the four instructional coaches?
Correct, because we have eight instructional coaches, yep. And actually, I think for next year, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm hesitant to say for sure, but I think we're actually increasing to five instructional coaches out of the general budget and three out of the Q Comp production, but I hesitate without that document for me.
When, when that initial deal, if you will, was signed, and we turned it into the state, did we turn in instructional coaches as part of that?
Correct, it's part of the, it's part, what was turned in is, is part of what's called the teacher career ladder on the Q Comp plan.
Right.
As being able to be an instructional coach, and so there was an agreement of that of who was going to pay for what.
And that was in the original contract, if you will.
Yeah.
The teacher career ladder was part of, you know, being able to give teachers opportunities outside of the classroom to grow in their kind of leadership and knowledge and capacity and that kind of thing, so there are mentors and instructional coaches and, you know, the coordinators like we have with Deb Van Kly and Jen Marty, and that's part of what was initially a thought around the whole plan, is to be able to give teachers career ladder opportunities.
When these kinds of things are put in place, is the discussion come up about sustainability of, of the program, and if so, like, what was, do you, you know?
We weren't here.
We weren't here.
Right, so, but, okay, so just say, generally speaking, does that conversation ever occur when, when?
I can tell you that it has occurred in the last two years now, that we've done a lot of work as a Q Comp, what's a Q Comp board, of which Kathy Moen and myself sit on, and work with the SEA to retool, what does, what exact, kind of this type of discussion, here's money you have, here's what it's going to cost as teachers step in lane, because that increases costs for the Q Comp, and so from that sustainability, we've gone to that, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure it was, it was.
At that level?
At that level, when it was first, at its first inception.
Okay. Well, and at that time, too, the board had had the conversation, and continues to have the conversation about, it needs to be self-sustaining, whatever you collect is what, I mean, otherwise, you know, is it just a, I mean, you've said it before, George.
Well, but what I remember is, the reason that we got into the game late was because the SEA was very adamant that unless we took both parts, the state part and the local levy, they weren't going to do it, and the board said, "Fine, we won't do it then if you don't want to do it." We didn't get in on the front end of Q Comp.
Right.
And, and I, this question about whether or not we're going to do the non-voter-approved levy, I mean, that's been talked about for, I don't know, eight years maybe? That's not a new discussion.
But Jennifer's question is a very perceptive question, because that's true in a lot of programs. When we talked about the stimulus that comes in about 2008, 2009, that's how we got intervention ends, that's how we got student advocates, and, but we knew at the time, it was good for about three years, and you take it when you can, but long-term sustainability becomes an issue.
And I think that's the thing that Denise has talked about.
That's what you're going to say, there's a slide coming up.
There's not a lot that, I, I, there's not a lot that the state does when, you know, how things shift, they don't really. They don't really help school districts with sustainability. And when people say, well, you know, why can't you get this right? The target is always moving. You, you know, you, we need to turn in, um, because of our contracts, we need to give teachers their contracts and tell them if they're coming back and do placement and staffing well before we ever find out where we, what we're getting from the legislature. And so, you know, those are the things that are ambiguous, that don't help the public understand how some of the targets impact.
Also, why we get hesitant when the term grants comes up, go out for a grant.
Right.
We're really hesitant in terms of, what is the sustainability of whatever the grant is going to start? Because at some point, if you've spent it on things that you have to pick up the cost of into perpetuity, you better be planning for that in your budget when that hits, or...
Now, what you gotta realize, too, it's usually two different audiences, those who get the grant and those who get the sustainability. I mean, they're usually two different groups.
But that's why we, when, we, you don't see us saying, we've got this grant and this grant, because of that exact question that you're asking is, it's just not prudent for us to be going out for stuff that isn't sustainable, that we know in the long run is gonna impact that bottom line of the general budget.
And it seems like it's really hard to end something, right? Like, you know, I keep wanting to hear, you know, what's the effectiveness of this, but we just, it's like, we're not gonna go there, because we put it in, we're gonna leave it there, and it's just gonna be there, but something we probably need to look at.
Well, even in candor, because the question has come up, and, and I, I realize the reluctance to answer it sometimes, like, what we've just said here is that four out of the eight instructional coaches are funded through QComp, and four are not. And, and the question that some have asked is, how do you measure their effectiveness?
And you're gonna get a report of our QComp leads that I think is gonna answer a ton of that, um, when they come to the school board, because we now, now in our second year, we're now having data, and I would, I would make an argument, and would feel comfortable with it, that they're doing a, that position is providing a great deal of support for our teachers in the buildings. Everything from embedded professional development to the goal setting that's related to our teacher development program, that's related to the mentoring program that we're putting in. Um, I, I think it would be one of those things on our side of the house, whether it was QComp or not, we'd be going, okay, how do we, until we absolutely can't do this, we would be fighting to keep it.
See, I think the, the problem with that is, if you start, look at that, you're gonna get teachers and instructional coaches come before you. You're probably not gonna get parents, you're not gonna get the kids crying at the podium. I mean, you, you have to realize, you know, who's gonna fight for instructional coaches? Well, nobody's gonna call us ding-dongs on Facebook because we cut instructional coaches. We cut fifth grade music, suddenly we're ding-dongs on Facebook. I mean, you, well, any, any, I mean, any program that impacts kids, and, and so, that's why I think we've gotta be a little bit, and I don't wanna say put blinders on, but we've gotta be a little bit careful when we cut programs that aren't gonna have, uh...
Same political.
A swell, yeah, a, a ground swell of, of kids and parents, because they aren't gonna touch instructional coaches.
But here's, here's a touch, here's an important one, I think, to get to. Sometimes, as administrators, you face a choice, instructional coach, more classroom teachers, what's gonna get the most bang for the buck? Now, if you go to colleagues or the coaches themselves, they have a tendency to advocate for that. I don't begrudge them that. If you're saying, okay, how about in results, in terms of measures for, and where I always go, is where in outcomes? Did the kids learn more? And again, how do you measure that?
I think that's one of the things where I know that, before we came, you all spent a lot of time looking at John Hattie's work and mega-analysis of something, and class size just does not, I know people don't like to hear that, but class size, unless you drastically impact that, and are looking at class sizes, you know, below eighteen, seventeen, sixteen kids, um, the results really aren't that different. And, you know, nationally, internationally, the pizza stores, anything that you look at. And so, I think those are the things, you know, what are you, are you going to look at research, are you going to look at results, or are you, you know, those, those are the tough decisions. But, um, when you're a teacher in a classroom, you do get to a point where a lot of little bodies is a tough thing, right? I mean, we know that. But if you're talking between twenty or twenty-two students for a kindergarten first grade, there's, there's not, you're gonna find a difference in what the achievement looks like to those kids.
Especially if you teach them the same way you've always taught.
That's right.
So, Denise, at this time, your team is not recommending or looking at all, um, at technology? Because I think it's only a matter of time, right, where the board's gonna have to, you know, back to the sustainable.
As far as capital levy, technology?
Yeah. Um, just in terms of the sustainability piece, I remember when John Perry was here, that, yes, the board granted one-time money, but, you know, we're gonna, I forget exactly now what he said, annually, what needs to be infused into the technology budget.
Yeah, about eight hundred thousand, about eight hundred thousand.
Just under eight hundred thousand, and a perfect example of that question is, we are inside of what is our current budget in learning and innovation. We are navigating back and forth for next year right now, because John needs some money for things like devices and carts that have gone past their life at the high school, and we're now doing the, okay, what aren't we going to do next year inside of the budget that we have on the curriculum side, so we can give John some money to make sure that we at least have the minimal amount of device replacement for that, just, just the high school. So, it's a great question.
Because some of our classes do, like, is it geography? And some of them now require that you have the software and everything on a Chromebook. So, you know, where we used to give kids a textbook, now they have a Chromebook with interactive software and those kind of things on.
And that goes to that sustainability question as well. It's, it's important, I would argue, for the board to understand the stuff that John Perry talks about with regard to technology in terms of lifespan. Devices aren't a one-and-done purchase. It is a ongoing, come up with a plan, a replacement plan is what it's called.
Is it a replacement plan right now?
Internally.
But not, but not enough.
Just what we can cover. It's about it, that's where the eight hundred thousand a year, it's about, it would, it would take us about eight hundred thousand a year to get into the mode of, we're gonna take the four- and five-year lifespan devices out of normal circulation, put in new devices, and then you get into a cycle every year where you're, you're dropping a hundred and fifty, you're adding a hundred and fifty, dropping a hundred and fifty, adding.
I remember that presentation, wasn't it a work session or something that you discussed that? Is the pocket of money, OPEB or, uh, QComp, what pocket of money does the technology come out of?
Just the plain general fund?
Something like this, just straight up just.
Currently, yep. It comes out of our side of the house unless there's something that's...
Whether it's general fund or capital, but again, we only receive so much capital as well.
We are, you know, we shared with you that when Morris Lovett came and talked to us a little bit about some of the levy things going on within the metro area, Stillwater is one, I think of two districts, um, metro-wide, that doesn't have a technology levy. So, he actually said to us at the time, I'll write the white paper, because he said it's ridiculous now that, you know, technology used to be something that was a nice-to-have or kind of exciting and new, and now really for kids, it really, it's really like pencils and paper and, and those kind of things. So, there's that piece, and I would say, to answer your question, Paula, it's not that we aren't, aren't looking at it, um, we think it is something that the board should consider down the road at some point. But I think that's our whole intention behind doing all this learning around finances and how things work is, because like we shared with you back in June, we are kind of at a crossroads where we have to decide, we've done a number of things to really get down to bare bones of what we have. You've seen that we've held the property taxes to a really decent place, and we think used our money wisely. We'd be asking you, you know, if we didn't have school consolidation, we'd be asking you this year to be doing, you know, about a hundred and, or a million and a half of cuts this year. So, we've, we've kept cuts away from the classroom, and we've used our money efficiently. But moving forward, um, that'll be part of your decision as a board about what are the choices that you want to make and what strategy you want to use. And, you know, from our, you'll see here, um, we can, it'll actually be a slide coming up, so I'll, I'll hold that thought for a minute.
Okay, before you leave this one, when we last voted on OPEB, you said, had we passed that at that time, we would have saved what from the general fund?
Well, that, you have about up to a million dollars. Well, I want to say, out of the general fund, right now, we are subsidizing eight hundred thousand.
So, let me just, my simplistic way of saying it, if we pass the OPEB levy, we would have eight hundred thousand more from the general fund that we could use for whatever.
To cover the deficit, yes.
Because remember, we have, right.
I was gonna say, we're just saying, no.
That's an important point, that if, if both of these, these are giving you, they're, they're filling in the gaps that we already have.
It's stable cuts, some cuts, or additional cuts, yeah. And one thing I would like to point out, that I think it's lost, and maybe, and I don't know if it's gonna come down to an either-or as, as far as direction on OPEB or QComp, but please keep in mind, and it was part of the discussion we had on OPEB last year, that we're staring at a very large cliff, um, that when, when the trust runs out, we're now talking about a two-million-dollar deficit. Just keep that in mind as you're thinking about, yes, this is, this is the immediate, but what is that going to look like as that trust wears out and our liability still exists? Now, we could be looking at a two-million-dollar hole that's going to be supported by the general fund. So, just be cautious of what the future will look like, um, and how we plan to address that.
So, again, four teachers out of eight, we are paying for out of the general fund. Is that right?
It's instructional coaches.
Instructional, instructional coaches. To ask the Hatties question, if we were to halt QComp for a year and put the, is it feasible to put the dollars into, say, some of the levy, uh, tech, the tech needs, is that, is that an option? Just asking, just asking.
It would, so it's...
Same pocket of money or different pocket of money?
It's the same answer to what George's question just was, is you'd have, if, all things being equal, if you didn't do that, you would have four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that would be sitting there just out of the general fund to spend on whatever. I don't know that you would, what you would, I couldn't anticipate what you'd spend it on, but...
Well, maybe just to save on cuts, same with the other, right?
Here, yeah, here's the only thing that I would say to that, is, save enough cuts, is, and not to get way down into the weeds with it, but that money's already coming out of a fixed budget on our side of the house, right? So, it's that, that's coming out of the professional development budget right now, which is, you know, it's that million fifty-five.
You can't just use that for anything.
So, but you had said before, I don't know, a couple times ago, we're spending closer to four percent on professional development, right?
You are, yep. We meet the, we meet well over the two percent required mark with our professional development days. The, the reason I say that is, you just, you have to be cautious about what you're gonna spend that on. You know, it isn't just a, you may say you want to spend it on, on technology, the question becomes, what's the technology? Then it's a sustainability piece, because my example was just on devices, right? It's also, it's every, it's all other stuff. It's all the smart boards we put in rooms that teachers use on a daily basis that sometimes wear out, it's...
And remember the staff development, the workshop days, that's also your days before school, when teachers are in, getting ready for their classrooms, an open house and that kind of thing, so.
If you were, if you were to do what Jennifer suggested with QComp, you would have to get together that committee and make that decision, would you not?
The, the teachers, the SEA would have to agree, because it's through an MOU technically is what it is, and part of the teachers' agreement, the QComp agreement, so it, it would be a negotiated part of, of that. It isn't, doesn't live inside of the contract, but it's part of the teachers' group under statute, it's between the teachers' group and the school district.
Okay. So, following up on Jennifer's question, there's four and four, four that come out of QComp and four that come out of the general fund.
Currently, currently, yes.
Okay. See, what's unique a little bit about Minnesota is the two percent that, that is allotted to professional development, and obviously it covers, that's a pretty big tent in what gets in there. Because a lot of times what districts have done in the past, in other places, when the crunch came on, they do a maintenance, or they do a professional development, that's what takes the hit. In Minnesota, they've kind of protected those groups, although they dipped in, a couple years ago, they dipped into professional development, and you could go lower.
So, here's where, I guess, why we just caution, it, it isn't as simple as that, so let's take, let's take literacy as we roll through. When we put a curriculum package, for simplistic terms, what we try to do is balance out then, what do we take out of the curriculum bucket? So, materials, and what, don't we have to take out a curriculum that we can take out of professional development to pay for the training? And as we roll through that, you know, those are kind of the two big buckets that we live off of on our side of the house, is the curric, the overall curriculum and professional development, and try to balance that piece out. So, you could go to tech, but to my earlier point, you could be at a spot at that point in time where you might say, we need to, we need to tool up all the high school teachers, that's gonna take a ton of professional development money in this year, we need to maybe use it on that.
It goes back to that, our last slide again, about that desirable, feasible, and sustainability. I mean, and the thing, the thing that's difficult for, um, you know, if you, if you suddenly stop an instructional coaching program where the teachers are having support, like, you know, one of your World's Best Workforce Goals, two of them are, y'all, kids ready by kindergarten and then read well by third grade, those coaches are a big piece of helping support those teachers. You've had lots of conversations about dyslexia and learning and how to do the strategies for that, that's another place where they help support. So, we have to look at those three, you know, three lenses about what's going to be sustainable, because if you pull in and put all things all over the place, that drives our, not only our kids and families don't know what's going on, it's like, well, program's here and then it's gone, but it also, um, you know, is not good for, um, our teachers' actually consistency either.
We have a discussion about the MOU, just, when you put this, when they put this together in generality, I'm just asking, do they talk about how many years and perpetuity, I mean, what if something happens and the money isn't there? I mean, how does that discussion occur? You sign it, something happens, it's not there, so then what?
It's a, that's why, it's part of the reason I think why it's an annual agreement, because there is, and we do talk about that, if that board is, it's very well aware that the state could come down and say, we're not doing QComp anymore.
Okay.
Well, I think, to your point, I think that, to me, it's almost like a fourth bubble we need that is effectiveness, because I think that's why we need to see that this is effective, because I think you believe it is, so we need to see. And I, I know we're talking about that as an example, but there's lots of things that, you know, you can't necessarily see the effectiveness, but if you can show that, here's, you know, here's what staff feel like they're getting out, here's how it's grown them, here's how it's helped kids, I think that would help.
They'll show that with the Q, I think it's next, next, uh...
Actually, next week, I believe, it's a report.
So, we have the two dates here, just to remind you that by June twenty-first, that's our last board meeting in June, we'll need a preliminary decision for OPEB and QComp. Remember, that's not set in stone, that just gives Kristin the go-ahead to put in and work the numbers and submit them in July, and then you have the time to make the final decision up until December. So, the decision in June is really to say, okay, we're gonna give you the go-ahead, Krista, to start putting this information in, because she can't do that after July, she has to get it ready so that you could certify it in September. Here's our three circles, desirable, feasible, and sustainable, and, um, the things for the board to consider moving forward is, how do you fund your World's Best Workforce Goals and, and support, um, our kids in the future, and what programs do you want to sustain in the future? We have some short-term considerations, you do have choices, I wish you had more choices. We could do nothing and use our fund balance reserve and drop below the fund balance limit set in policy. If you remember, your policy says, um, that you'll be at about five million and, or five percent, and, um, if we don't do something differently, you'll start to dip down into what that, uh, reserve is. We can improve the state-authorized OPEB and QComp levies, um, as we just shared earlier, and we can also reduce expenses and control our costs. And how do you do that? Class sizes, programs, services, employment contracts. So, that's what our next session will be, um, just revisiting with you what those look like and what are some of the choices that you have for that. Long-term considerations, we can request an operating levy to increase from voters, that would help with your technology costs, could help with up to, you know, eight hundred thousand or so a year for technology costs. or so a year for technology costs. We could also request a capital, oh, I, I skipped those up for capital projects levy from the voters. One of the things, you know, we do have some time and we're spending a lot of time trying to educate our community and be really clear about what we're doing with our finances. As we look at this, I think we would recommend that you look at something that is a combination of everything. You know, looking at what you might do with contracts and class sizes and our services that we have, doing something with our state authorized OPEB levies. And then possibly looking at a levy in the future. You know that you have a levy drop-off date that we shared with you earlier in 2022. And so, you know, looking at that, you have lots of choices about when you might do something and go forward. If you renew before it's up, then it's usually a revoke. And I'm going to make sure, I got to make sure the increase, or the, it's a revoke, and then you would increase it. And the language there gets a little tricky sometimes, so. But you have choices moving forward, what you want that to look like.
So talk more about, because you said we have time, but I feel like we're at the edge of that cliff sooner than that it's going to happen really fast. So talk more about how, how we feel like we have time to really look at this.
Well, it's not tomorrow, you know, so you do have, if it's payable, you have money coming in till 2022.
But isn't the two point four million like after next year?
It's right now, it's right now, yep. So that's, that is where, when we talked about OPEB and QCOM helping fill in those gaps and float for a little bit and bringing a little bit more money into the system, you're there right now. That's what we talked about with our, you know, during our contact negotiations. We're at a crossroads. We've done everything we can internally. So yes, I would agree with you, Shelley. I mean, it's, the levy piece is, we have a little bit of time. You know, initially, when we talked with Morris Leatherman, they really thought it would be a good idea to have a technology levy in the spring of nineteen, next spring. And many of you and others have said, well, we'll never pass a levy. That is a conversation that you can have. That's one thing you can do. I think part of our, our process here is to just share with the community and public how we are using our money and the things that we've done to hold taxes steady or even lower them. And provide still, when you look at the services and things we're giving our kids, we give them a pretty good education. Are there things that we'd still like to do? There are, but now we have to figure out what to do inside the box and then if we're going to ask our community for anything else.
With her, Paula? Why is it going up and what am I missing on this? I've been staring at that and what, what is it? Why it's going up?
Isn't there inflationary increase?
Is that what that symbol is?
That's what it is, yeah.
It's overthinking the slot.
Yep.
Okay.
It's your eyes. Seriously, I'm like. And, and you could, I mean, for a renewal question, it could happen in November of 2020 for a renewal.
See, I never had trouble with the timelines.
Yeah, right.
Because when you got that, you're thinking it's bigger. That's right, it's a little bit challenging.
So when we come back, if you have questions about any of these, please.
Two, two things that I think might help us a little bit, because they were topics, maybe, is what actually goes on that QCOM, with different categories. Oh, of what's captured in the QCOM. And then the other one, same thing for professional development. And especially if it's four percent, and, okay, this is the original, two percent would have to go. And then the additional two percent. I think that might help us context, understand it a little better.
Sure. Well, right. And then the, what we, when we talk about the two percent at two percent, the, the first two percent is, is entirely talking about professional development days and what it costs in salary to cover the cost of that, to provide that day. The, the additional two percent that we set aside, so the one point fifty-five, one, a million fifty-five that I talk about, that's the professional development budget, which is all of the, paying for all of the trainings, the professional development that actually we take people to.
Yeah. And the other, the other, I think that you talked about three, a fixed cost.
Correct.
We employ this many employees one of the days and you're, you're covering that as well.
That, that's the, that's the base, two percent.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So we'll be back the end of May with.
Great.
That's what I was asking, when you.
Twenty ninth, I think, twenty ninth.
Thank you.